I'll order the. President's left board meeting for Tuesday, December sixth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approved and signed in the minutes of the previous meeting.
Sherry did a wonderful job. She's on the call. Just want her to know that she's wonderful. I think she and I will talk a little bit. We may be able to like therapy a little bit.
I guess, hey, we, yeah, we don't need word for word.
Yeah, what she do. Yeah, what she do is amazing. Especially because one, we figured it out. Thanks. To share if you are Alan or you sit on that side of the bill, uh, they had a building when you speak, if you could just, you can anciate a little bit. That would help her out a lot.
I don't talk about that.
That's important. And by the way, tonight, as we go through the meeting, if you have any comments to make, questions to ask, whatever, that will come under citizen concern. We're not doing questions and stuff all throughout the meeting. There'll be.
Have the opportunity of review this this morning. I make a motion to.
All in favor?
I'm in a copy for you guys, so can you sign?
Again, I'm gonna roll here, anybody. Next thing is going to be approved and signed the present warrants becomes payable warrant and payable paint roller warrant.
Um, for the accounts payable, there was nothing to. Um, you'll notice that the fire department received their, their, their first half of the. Of their yearly pay for this, uh, pay period. Um, everything else, I think was pretty standard. We. Yeah. The card member service, which is our. For the card payment is a little bit higher than what I was in. In, in, in anticipating, because what happened was I signed up for. I think I have mentioned it here. I signed up for service where we can track the lead be like concerns. Of existence. So like if somebody were, were coming and say, you know, I, I'm worried about this. I put it in and then we can track that basically. Didn't realize what I paid for. Instead of yearly by month. But the good news is that we have it now.
So we look at all the numbers. How do they, you know, now we're reaching the. And when the beginning of December, um. Over the year, how does the numbers look? Based on the individual, but yeah.
They're doing, they are doing. Probably fairly well. The budgets that we would expect to be at. At, at like half are, I think at half are the few that are even under, um, at the. At the end of the month, I'll have an updated. That spreadsheet that I've been working on. But we are doing like pretty good. Our overall. The revenues are up as of this month by. In forty thousand dollars and the expenses are down, I mean, are under budget by sixty thousand. Um, there was one bill that I didn't go on there because Alan. And I had, I was talking about it. We had, we had had an agree, a virtual. Agreement with, um, the company that brought in the sand for us. To also do the like mixing for us as well at a dollar per yard. Um, when we got the bill, they actually charged us two dollars and a quarter. Per yard. So I called them. I spoke to one lady who sent me to a woman. That woman sent me to a guy and that guy phone didn't work. So I just put it on here until they get a hold of me. That guy's phone didn't work.
Okay.
Uh, Jeff was, do you know Jeff there?
It's your Jeff and then I think the original one I talked to was Mike.
That's why I thought he was.
I, I think he was, but he originally, and I told him we were paying a backyard and push it up. He goes, okay. But then they brought a bulldozer and stuff in to push it all up. So. I didn't anticipate that. It did a heck of a dog, even at two dollars and a quarter. It's still deeper than what Seabreeze would have got it. It was still two dollars deeper than Seabreeze, so. Maybe we can. We'll see if we, you know. I didn't agree on two and a quarter a yard. But we'll work it out. I mean, there's money in the budget for it. We're on the budget on this end and stuff like. Make a motion to accept the warrant.
A second. All in favor?
No, just.
Lost the viewing.
Federal announcements. Next regular meeting of the select board will be December twentieth, uh. At five here at the fall. We will be accepting Christmas presents then. There will be a select board workshop on December eighth, uh. Three days from now, at ten o'clock, to further review the changes to the personnel policy. That'll be here.
At ten o'clock, right?
Ten, yep. Down committee reports, planning board.
Yes. Jeff isn't here and my name is Steve Stone. I'm on the board. And I'm the one that's. Doing the, uh, work up on the solar. And the question is, we're going to be going out. Now, I anticipate that at the end of, uh, the end of next week, before the next meeting. I will have all of the, uh, questions in the questionnaire, a draft copy to present to you for further review. And we just have to go through the, uh, all the questions we have and narrow them down to a good number. And then get them clear.
Thank you. So. If I may, I might have a question on that again. What if? See, they're, they're doing the workup on the solar panels and everything. What if somebody comes in before that? And says, I want to put a solar panel. You know, then I want to do a thirty acre solar panel up on. Twenty seven. We have no, we have nothing to go by as far as rules. Can we? Can we do something like a moratorium for a hundred and eighty days until? There's the planning board. We did one at a time with the Beryl and One One. We actually did moratorium until the state bring everything out.
The state had a special rule about that. I think that's why I worked. Um, the My One One. I'd have to check with the attorney, but I don't believe so.
You don't believe why?
That we can stop it because we ran into this in another town that I was the like holding portion of the square. The town was in the process of like, well, like we're doing a voting on the moratorium. And there was a commercial one that was going in at the same time because we couldn't stop it.
Right, but if you, if you do a moratorium before they get anything started. Then you, then, then they can stop for a hundred and eighty days.
Right, but I don't think that the select board has the authority to do that. You have to be able to vote the town.
I, I understand that, but we would have to have a, we would have to have a public care and or a. Or excitement. I mean, we would have to have a vote of the town to do it, is what I'm trying to say. What is our process? Of doing that? I mean. And I myself, I don't like huge, I, you see them all over the place. I think they're a nice job. That's just my opinion. But to, we are, I don't know if we can make any rules and regulations, where they can put them in a certain area of town. In order, you know, you can pick certain districts or.
Right.
Uh, you know, I don't know what we should do. I'm just wondering.
Right. One of the things that concerns me about the whole situation here is that. I don't believe you can start it. I've spoken with the, uh, rural development for a county that's spoken to the state. I think that our, our problem here in the town right now is that our ordinances are not sufficient. To prevent anybody from coming in, putting an industrialized or commercialized. Solar power facility. And my concern is the time we're going to take to. Get everything started. Is not going to be enough time. I've already seen resource development trucks driving around yesterday. I have heard it's more like kind of a. Bad feeling that we're going to have somebody present pretty soon for an industrialized or commercialized and we won't be able to stop it. So I would love to see a moratorium put in place and give us a hundred and eighty days that solicits the town's. Input on it with the questionnaire we're going to send out, have a tough tale to write for the individuals. And in a hundred and eighty days. I must but to make sure that you guys had an ordinance in place at the town to vote for, but you've got to be able to. Regulate it. We can't do that right now. I mean, there's been. Ordinances.
So. If, if Dresden, we have, we don't have. A referendum vote at time of the year. We had what's called. So that means that according to the law, we have to give people at least a ten day notice if, if we're going to have a vote. So we, so just technically, if, if you're asking, if we can have such a meeting, yes, we would need at least that amount of time to give people the notice provided on.
I would say that if we just get a special panel meeting. Have a vote, give us the time to put it together with the input of the town for what they want. I mean, I can't, I can't say anything against all the panels. I've got them on there. But this, this isn't my feelings. This is the town. The town's input is essential for this whole thing. That's where the questionnaire will come in, but we've got to get it in place. Before something else moves forward.
If, if the, if you guys, if the board would like, I can work with the attorney to get the wording for a warrant and just to go through all the rules.
Why don't we do that?
Just so you know, I've, I've been in touch with probably six or eight towns anyway, talking to excitement. Talking to planning board CEOs. Uh, and all of them are saying the same thing. Some of them say that they wish they had moved forward before they got caught. Oldsfield, Lowell. Felgrade, and some of these places didn't have anything in place. And the way the laws are right now. It's fine, fine property for the developers to come in and. And in my feeling, that's taking advantage of the town. Because the town people do not get the electric breaks that they, that, uh, you think they would. It gets, it gets to the Bonnington one with four hundred and ninety acres, two hundred of which was clear cut. That was five, I believe it was five colleges, maybe only four. One of them was in the state of Maine. They financed that project. They pushed the plant up there and the benefits are going to the colleges. Electricity credits that go into the colleges. Four of them were, I think it was four that was in Massachusetts. Boden, I think is the one that was in name. So it's, I don't like to see people get. Used. You say, and I don't want to see that happen in town. I'm not, I'm not a lifelong nurse. I, I only got here forty years. I can tell you that I love the town, now, whenever I can to try to help the town get to where it wants to be. I just don't believe anybody in town wants to get used.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll look into that. Thank you.
Cool board report.
So, uh, really, we're in budget season. Uh, the administrators at the schools are starting to. Put together their requests so we can come to the table for our next budget meeting, which will be, uh, around the summer fifteenth. Uh, to get whatever data they have. We've got a deep dive into how Richmond will affect us going on right now. And the next school board meeting will be January fifth. It's, uh, again, will be on Zoom, because there was a people at, and it'll be at Monmouth. For that next one, um. Just recently, as of like an hour and a half ago, Dresden Elementary School will be shutting down for tomorrow. They'll reopen up on. Uh. Thursday, due to twenty-four percent of the. Staff and students have come down with COVID, so, uh, the janitorial staff are going to shut down. Do a complete sanitation and cleanliness for the school to try and. Help slow down the, uh, the spread of the flu and stuff, so. Um, that's going to happen. So for anybody that's online, which doesn't really look like this, anybody that has kids online, let's stay just all of a sudden get some kids. Um, that's pretty much what's happening. I, I haven't got a return email back on how that'll affect bus routes. Because high school kids will continue, high school and middle school will have a normal school day. It's just the elementary school. So.
Well, the elementary school is closed tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
You might open up again on Thursday.
It'll be open up on Thursday. Tomorrow will be a. A sanitation day for the school and hopefully it will slow whatever spreads going on in the school. So.
Thank you.
Fine, big committee.
Um, we've been pretty busy, um, the past couple of weeks. We, uh, got accepted into the, the, the get ready grant. Um, and we will find out on Thursday and Friday, we're up in Waterville, um, for a. Um, broadband summit, um, just exactly what, what that's, what that's going to mean, um, how, how we're going to be able to use it. And, um, Don and I are both going to the, to the meeting up in, um, Waterville. And we're, um, hoping that when we come back, the, the committee's going to have enough information to actually make a recommendation. About where, where we're going to, where we're going to move into the, the grant process, which is breathing down our necks pretty hard right now.
Thank you. Education exploratory committees changing.
Sorry. Unless it says change, it could say change for all. So we talked about it. Have we talked about it here? Yeah.
Yeah.
So last time we talked about that, I was wanting to write a charge for. This committee, which is, which was on the education exploratory committee. I'll see if I can share the screen because I was going to put it up on. I don't know how to do that. Sorry, people that are online. But I do have it here as well. So we are slowly coming into the, the twenty-first century, whether we like it or not. So this is the official charge that I wrote for the committee. They, we're trying to use a form now, so basically. You know, I, I use this form for the technology and in the broadbands, so hopefully. It will look okay, um. What it does is it goes through, it establishes, you know, what, you know, what actions give them the authority which they, the. Which are, the select board will be voting on it. Tonight, and this is the law that pertains to the meetings for a town. Uh, the committee, and also they would also ponder, uh, the person, the. Personnel, yeah, the policy as well. Um, the committee itself has a wonderful list of items that they want to research and. Um, I, at first, when I was writing this, I was going to incorporate that all in there, but then I'll see, but I think for the charge itself. I think it would be better to leave it as this one sentence or two, I guess. Because we don't want to narrow them down into anything. We want them to have the option to, to look at everything. Um, so the purpose is. The, the, this committee is. Established to discuss, research and advise the residents of the town on options for. Education. Um, and also the committee is not au- authorized to make any promises or enter into any verbal or. Or. Or agreements that, 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 that purported to represent the, the, the town. Um, that's on there just for some other things that we've had, that we've had go on. Anyway, we don't have to get into that, but. Those, please don't speak on behalf of the town. So the membership will make up up to nine members. At large, who will be appointed by the select board. Um, the administrator, me, will serve as. As an ex officio member, as, as I do on all committees. Um, I did also put in there one, one, one of the, the select board members could also be. Inex officio. Um, the, the committee will elect their own chair and somebody to be. The, the, the secretary. I and the select board member will only serve as ex officio, meaning, meaning that we don't have a vote on anything. Not that this kind of committee will have a lot of votes, but my job, as I'll say, will be to help guide like. You know, with, with, with like policies, what the state rules are, what the state rules aren't, um. How would, you know, they did, you know, they did all of this. Uh, they did all this work, now what? So. I would be there for that as well. Um, how, how the, the, they do their business, the committee is. An official, uh, like body, which means they are subject to the freedom of access law. They have to meet in. In a public place, keep all the minutes and. And so on, um, they, they can choose when they have a meeting, but they can't meet less than, than quarterly. Um, and they will gather information about educational options for the residents. A quorum of people. A quorum of the committee is one half plus one. All, all their recommendations should be a majority vote. They will follow the, the like Robert's order. That's, that, that, that's all that boring stuff. Um, they have to approve their minutes. Um, the committee chair or the select board member will, will, will report at least monthly back to this. Any meeting, or if they are asked to. Um, this is an ad hoc, so there is no. Other sunsets, so meaning. There is no end date to it, but if they get. To the point where they're done, then, then they're done. Um, and, and. And also lastly, they and or the select board have, have the right to suggest any other changes. To this charge. That has to be accepted by the select board.
So we're going to be extending the, we need. On Thursday's workshop with personnel files, we also need to talk in something in there that says. It applies to. Particularly as it's.
Yep. It currently does.
Oh, do we actually, you're looking for approval of that?
Yeah, we'll vote on it and then I have the one that you guys will sign.
And there's a bunch of little edits in here that need to be done. And some of it extends to other documentation. Are we select board, are we board selecting, are we? Needs to be one thing, right? We should be. I suggested it's select board. Single word. Because you have it in here three different ways. And then it's not, it's not a charter. So I can give you my edits, not a charter, it's a charge. Status and a closing parentheses, blah, blah, blah. So. Um, but. If you agree to make those edits, then I make a motion that we accept the charge. And then subsequently discuss who. Going to be anointed from the select.
Yeah, oh, okay, I thought you meant the, the, the committee. We actually have a list. Sorry, did, did you ring the list?
Um, I can pull the email off of everybody.
If not, we can appoint everybody at the next meeting.
Yeah, probably.
Were appointed, then, yeah, so you have another form for that.
There's another one. The swearing in, in our. You guys can appoint. We, that doesn't mean that, that, that we, we, we have to sign a form. We assign a form. Whenever. The, the, the important thing is that we vote on it. Are there, it doesn't sound like there's enough, for me, there's a law changer. I could just make them right now.
Well, we're gonna. We're gonna take the names in two weeks anyway. So instead of, I mean, I, I'm okay with this, what we're doing. As far as I make a motion to. Approve what we have with Dawn's. Edition, edit, or. Elisions. For paragraphs and stuff on it, if you know what I mean, but I'm. I'm looking at and trying to find.
Don already did the motion, so we just need to say.
We're trying to find that. I think you were talking about why.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe they want to be appointed tonight.
Yeah, so you want me to read the names off? Alright, so we have. So we have, um, Leah Vicard, myself, Amanda Pendleton. Do you want me to? Yeah, for spelling and stuff like that.
Is it the email that you're sending?
So, uh, I'll just read them off. It's Amanda Pendleton, Lisa Hewitt, Karen Moody. Uh, Peter Elvin, Gary. Bay. Loud. And I think that's.
And we are looking for more members too, if anybody's interested.
Our next meeting is December nineteenth.
Are you going to appoint me? Yeah, are you going to vote to?
Make a motion to reappoint, uh, people that. Were just named off. For now.
I mean, that's, that's the. It's in the process. Candidates until they. You get the other. Definitions completed, so I'm not sure.
They're not really candidates. They, they want to be on the committee, so why would they be?
Well, we have to approve it. If we're controlling the vertical and horizontal, then until we say yay.
So we really can't do anything tonight with, with the people. I mean, our.
We don't have to, as they've already, we don't have. We don't have to stop those committees. I would just like to have everything in order before we.
So we just created the committee, but we're not gonna put anybody on.
You have. What, five members, six members?
Yeah, eight committee.
We said there's gonna be nine, you have yourself, we still don't have a select board member, so it's, that's why I said it's in process. It's been a stick with four rules. When we're gonna create, we gotta follow.
You can go ahead and continue to make like the news mostly. And then next we leave, well, we can get people approved and.
So do they need to go to the town office to be approved, is that what the?
So we we need to vote on them at a public meeting, and then they'll need to paperwork.
There is that minor, I don't know what you're calling it. So. Leah should have that, to distribute it to her members, so they can complete it and return it to you. They should continue their work. Now we're gonna. Suggest you can discuss one of us. Well, if if you're okay with me being on it, then.
Does it, does it have to have a segment on it?
No, it's basically, this is what it says, there's, is there. I'll make a motion that we uh. Select board reports transfer station. Just had it. Um, Ernie and I spoke earlier this week, and he also wrote me in notes, um, the bottles are starting to go down, which is great, thanks to the clean. Other people coming in to get them, um, still working on the phone, their phone isn't working right now, so we're still trying to get that. Um, fixed.
But may I ask on the phone, is that true? Consumer, that's respectable.
We haven't solved it for all of us.
I don't understand that, and and as a single line going into the thing, I don't understand.
It's gotta be from the pole to. Um, we did have a.
Has a call been made to, yes, solved it.
This is the second time. I am going to talk to the flat contractor, I don't know if you noticed, but we think it was a flat contractor, don't really know for sure. Somebody drove around the fence. And left some pretty sizable rust on the side of the fence, the gate, sorry, not fence, but the gate. And we could only think of when Ernie and I were were talking about, they were the only ones that we would think of that would, you know, that might need or want to go around. Because maybe they, because there was tracks going out, I mean. Yeah, but there were notes that had returned track, but. So that means like whoever left got out. When the gate was open. Meaning that it was probably.
They might have had a key in the car, I'll I'll take care of that tomorrow, that's not a problem, I'll take care of that.
Cause it was suspicious activity, there was a robbery mode. I don't know. When I was there on Sunday, they were saying that. Somebody had been in the place and a rug had been removed. In front of a. Metals barrel. And so they were questioning what that was, and then I didn't see when that occurred for the going around the gate. Almost wish I had done it because I keep loading my stuff in the gate.
Do you think somebody drove in, but when they drove out, they drove, they drive out the same way?
Ernie knows more about vehicles than I do, he said there was no return track, so.
Alright, get a whole John.
Again, we don't have proof, we just were thinking that that's what happened was they needed to get in fast, and then they didn't have the beam where they left the beam. And then they came out through the gate. Alright, um, the other thing, we had mentioned the snow bowl, are you still gonna bring that?
Got it, I do, I have it right in my, I called Ernie on Sunday, I tried to talk to him on Sunday. And but looking good until like the twenty ninth, but no. Hope that prediction is good.
Town office. We are currently still searching for a new clerk, I think there's good news, I advertised it last week and. We probably already had ten, I don't know, I don't know the number, it's over ten people have already. Ap- applied for it, so I don't think we're going to have a problem getting that, and it's actually. There, with my quality, so. No, there's nobody that has experience working in a town office, but there is one person that worked at the D I B. In Augusta, which is helpful, um, because because that's part of the job, there's somebody that, there's totally have been like. Office managers, so they know how like office works, so they can do all that, um. And talk to, with somebody that had applied to the last go around. Um, who might still be interested in there as well. Yeah, um, as far as other town office stuff, um. Last week and sent out the foreclosure notices. Over the two thousand nineteen taxes, there was ten.
That is nice, only ten.
Yeah.
That is, it's a lower number than than it has been in the past, yeah, nice.
Um, just. Credit to Anne especially, and to Anne Catherine, it's been a hard couple of weeks with. You know, only being here for two days a week or something, so there's a lot more stuff going on. Think they've handled it well, I've 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 been down there to to help them up to, um. I think it's gonna be a rough winter, I've had, I've had more G A cases in the last two months than I have my entire career. As a town manager, so I think it's gonna be a rough winter for that. They're doing a lot of those, actually, those take a lot of time, um. And, yeah, just. Talking forward on 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 some.
Bring on the snow. We need the ground that brings out, it would be all a road degraded, uh. Kind of smoothed up enough of the road, I didn't wanna do a deep three in autumn, so I finished up today. Um, when you're saying then, yes, all coming on Monday. Looking good, I I say we're looking good.
Steve was not even here, but he sent me some updates, um. Engine number one has the new tires that we talked about, that we are gonna buy next, the next, at the last meeting. Um, it's scheduled to get its inspection now that it'll pass. Engine number two has a, it had a gas leak repaired, um, they put in a new carburetor kit. Engine three. There was a leak that they thought was a leak, but the the mechanic couldn't couldn't replicate the leak happening again, so. So hopefully that's fixed, but they did, they did fix, or they did. A change of the warning little light wires, because maybe that's what we pull with the problems, um. And ladder, the ladder truck also had the exhaustless feet fixed and is. And that is, it's also scheduled for its inspection. Um, I also know that they are currently doing their 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 Christmas tree sale, which they do every year, every Saturday and. Uh, Sunday from nine to four thirty. And on the eleventh. The they'll be having an event with uh Santa Claus over here, where 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 the parents or like grandparents can bring their kids down to have a picture taken. What happened?
Everything must be good then, everybody showed up on it, which complains.
Well, I wouldn't say.
Not about water.
Yeah, yeah, not about water. That's quite a properties. Um, I would like to table that and sort of make some some more information. Security system. I still haven't heard back from those companies, I did get a new card from Alan. Was that, yeah, you brought me a card, I I I have a call, Neil, Neil over here. Um, I'll just think down here, you can on Thursday. Yes, you have to get Thursday or Friday, I will be calling him though soon, he actually is, he did the, he did the camera systems. For that the town of Richmond users, for their buildings and their parks as well. I hope we're getting to an end, cause it's kind of like we're like we talked about, we don't wanna do it during the winter time.
Um, I think you um wanna state the reason for it, last time you brought up that. We were kind of vague on it, so.
The reason for the cameras, this has been like an ongoing thing from what from what I understand. Uh, they they've talked about it for a like number of years, um, basically it's for. Um, a few, a a few years ago, there was a few times when the office staff felt. So that's why they put in the pain buttons, and also we have talked about in the past that. Um, the way that the office is designed now, the two doors that are up front. If somebody were to come in to the front door, I mean. Through that first door, there's no way to actually know whose area, because we can always have that that. Like second door open, um, so it was just basically just for maybe safety of like workers. And just keep an eye on them. Those crazy things are happening nowadays.
Also, a lot of these security systems down in Scotts.
Is that the name that you?
We used to have them, northeast of the fire department, and we got rid of them. Uh, that's not saying we can't call them again, but.
Well, there's right there on. Security system.
Yeah, I didn't remember, and I didn't know it, since you we do a lot of work with the hardest.
They actually decide.
That's a good question, I actually don't. That's one of those, I'm gonna get a system.
Just bringing that up, when I was in Richmond last winter, their system had a. A T V or whatever it is, or they, it showed like six different cameras at the park, at the walk field. I mean, Lane Field, all this stuff, and somebody analyzing or something. I just asked who did this system, the town manager there, and she gave me his card. That's one of the better, I've not, all the years I worked in Richmond, we never had a system like that one, and I don't know what it cost. But I'm just saying, it looked like a nice system, that's why, letting the guy, so, and I've always been the one for the last, probably. Seven, eight years advocated for have. A camera in the town office, in case something happens, you who done it or whatever it is for, and it just never. It's always been too expensive, but.
Yeah, the spec should be not just. We may wanna look at how to get also.
Well, they they already have cameras here.
I think, well, I think they do inside, at least. I'm pretty sure they do. You gotta go and look at them, but it's not in their top top.
There keeps becoming more options. New business, in Karen Park in, uh. And register our appointment. Okay, so this is. Something that we so certainly were given notice, we have to appoint. A person, so I'm just, so I I wrote up in those, or I mean, it it a form and born. For me to be appointed as the the interim uh the interim clerk and the. The uh registrar. So something I wanna do, I've never strived to be, it it by comfort in my life, but I think this is a fairly common practice. It's it's just until we have somebody that is appointed, because we have to have somebody with that title of clerk and be like registrar. That's what I can, any questions?
Have you pursued? Temporary services.
I've spoken to a few people about about coming in to help us with. With uh having some coverage. In 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 terms of like taking the pilots off now, because. I'll just take it, that's just what happens when, if you're a town manager or the town. Administrator, you just take over. That's how, that's how it works in the in the town bureau.
So, do we, we, we need to vote on that? I'm making votes in there, you cover them, but you you're so-called title until we find somebody who knew that.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Just so you know, I struggle with the math, they can three positions phone, but. Two, and you already have a full dot, so.
Excellent, I T support bids. So we have been talking about it for a little while, that our I T system at the offices. Patch, I guess, right here. For for a bit apart, so I do have, um, in your package, you have one price from uh Virgus. Computer to be our I T support company, and then I'm talking this as well from the the the. The calm doctor, the dot net. I don't know how you want to go through it, if you want the ten thousand for the view of those, I can give that to you. I think we might, I think we might come down to this price, so I can start with that, the to have. To have the Virgus computer accompany you for us, it would be unlimited online support. It would be unlimited online support, meaning if they don't have to come to the office, we could, they'll do it for free, not free. They also would take care of the. The server, they would take care of the updates that need to happen on the computer. If something were to go wrong, they would have all of our backup information, so if we had to set up a, a temporary. Office, say here, we could come here, bring all our computers, and then they could have us go up, up and going in like a few hours. And, and we have access to all of our stuff. Um, they are, they're at a five hundred dollars per month. Um, the, the com doctor does all the same stuff. Um, and they are three hundred sixty dollars a month.
So who do we have now?
They don't have anybody. At the current moment, at the current moment, we kind of go with whoever will, I'll call Virgus if they. If, like, if they answer and they get over to us, great. I, I call the com doctor and if they get to us, then they come and do it first.
So, we've had Virgus before, and. We've not had good results with Virgus before, if I remember right. We, it took us a long time, different times, and I'm not going to end.
Could be, no, we have not had a good service from them. There have been times where. Um, the computers have been down, three O's been down, and we've put calls in and they don't even respond. In a timely manner.
I mean, it, um, isn't it a little bit better when Daniel knows? You know, I'd like to hear more about the other one, because of all the, all the times we've had with Virgus. And we called and called and, and I even think Lisa had been coming with them when, when they were there, so it's. You know, even though they say good and all this stuff.
Can I see that? It's nice that. We have a proposal. Some statement of word. Uh, Ts and Cs and all that stuff. This quote. Doesn't do much for, well, there's. Yeah, the schedule B. Declaration of Rights is not covered.
It's still the expense here, well, maybe. Even a couple years ago last year, they were talking about getting out of the small, small business support. That they wanted to be more involved in big business. And found, found a small business now. I will say that the com doctor, the, they, they came to us and asked us if we wanted them, so. I think that was great. Um, they are the network administrator and the IT support for the city of. I don't know, I would get back. It's either back or, or, or about that. Either way, very, very. That would have a lot more service than, than what we do. And, you know, we've had to call them in, in last few months, they've been right down. I think, you know, within like an hour or two, their office is right on. In Chelsea, right on this road. Um, you see it when they got the whole fashion car.
I think we've actually taken stuff out there, doing the board, if I remember.
Um, they were so interested in the, in this that they, they actually came to us and I, we did. Well, like a walk around of the, of, of, of the buildings, because um one thing that we had talked about was. You know, right now, if I bring my laptop here, I can't, I can't, I don't have access to anything over at the, the like office. But they, they know how to like get it to be set so that I don't have access to wherever I am. Here in Antarctica, Europe. They could, but they didn't talk about that at all. I'm saying like, when the com doctor went above me, I'm like, they came here, they wanted to talk to us. Their big thing, their prices a lot better. I had budgeted for more than three hundred and sixty dollars, so that's already on there with some money there. And we just, we need somebody, it's like, I'm, I'm getting tired of, like, you, you, you. We cut a wire and the, the like microwave will, will like turn on. Or you pull on a wire and you hold on it for like a minute and then it's on a hash. That's happening more now too.
This setup is a bit of a mess.
Yeah.
They did. A good job. I mean, this is a reasonable proposal. Most of the moving parts. This to me is much safer bet than pre-creased. So, I move, we accept com doctors bid. He's got those insurances, he's got records. Everything you would ask for if people going and doing an actual solicitor.
I did, I actually sent them an R and P. After they came to see me, I sent them the R and P.
I'll second that. All in favor?
See Joe, I don't know nothing about computers. I roll on with you, right? I do know all the trouble we've had with Virgus in the past. And I didn't know we didn't have anybody right now. I know we can't call on different people, but I know you would, you would call Virgus every now and then.
Yep, and they came, I think once, right, and they, they came once.
Virgus?
Yeah, remember that day that we couldn't get onto the server? They broke into the server course. That was the last time that we heard.
That they were getting out of the business.
And then you want to move the supplements?
Yep. Um, we don't have that many. I'm told by, by Joe Sally, the assessor, that these are the last two of them. Or the, or the mess up that, that happened. This was a mobile home that was added, that we do not have record of, this one. Was a new home that was built, then again, I just think it's funny, we don't have a house. Um, another mobile home. I know home was added.
Well, these are all supplements, these are all.
Yes, these are ones that standing on tax phase. These, these are, these are ones that we added in. To the system, but then because of, of the glitch, they didn't add to. Well, that's what they were, they were.
Let me ask you a question, I'm the one with the new home. Well, somebody just went and built a new home without going to the town for doing anything, is what you're pretty much saying.
We have examples of that, of that happening. These are not, these are that Joe put the information in, and then because of the glitch that happened. It didn't, there wasn't, I, there wasn't, there wasn't. They, they weren't taxed on.
Cause we do have something in our organs, if, if you build something, and there is fine on that.
Yes. I believe any of those were passed along to James, but they weren't, they will be.
Can I make a motion that we accept the uh. Supplements that we, that we have here.
You have no concern about any of that.
No, they were just part of, of, of the glitch.
All in favor? Next item of citizens' concerns.
No, I don't think any right piece paper, it's just a radio concern. As a citizen, right, I'm sitting in this meeting and I'm watching what's going on. You guys are all basically the faces of the town, right? Come in here and see this. Here's what I see though. I see you have a serious problem with him. So clearly obvious that it just looked so unprofessional. He is our town treasurer, manager, or whatever you want to put him in. You have a problem with his position and being in that position. That's fine, well and good, but not in display of the public. We look at it and say, there's a problem with their excitement and how our talent is being brought. Whether you have a problem or not. Wait for it after, not in the public setting, because all we see is complete disrespect for his position. And, and you're literally nitpicking him in front of us. Be a little bit more professional of that, that's for you. I'm directing it to you. Last week's split, you can come back and say whatever you want. Fine. But last week I watched a situation happen and, or the last meeting, I watched something happen like that. Save your bickering for after the meeting. Not while in front of the public, that's just my opinion. Say whatever you want after I sit down, but that's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I'll, I'll be very happy, Joe. I, I have a quite long list of something waiting patiently. Um, I, I think in terms of priority, uh, this information about solar industrialization in president is critical. And I think this should be number one on your hit parade of issues to move forward with a moratorium as quick as possible. This is uh, it will affect the environment we live in. People move here because they want a rural environment. They don't want an environment cluttered by undrives. And solar panels by flooding up it, especially when they're in gigantic farms. So I would appreciate if you can move this faster. Get the planning board, the uh weapons they need, so that this can be properly evaluated before someone sneaks in the back door. Because uh. We got to start turning things around and being very proactive and not kicking it down the road to the next meeting. So that's, that's my, that wasn't my number one, but. It's moved up to the top of this. Uh, do we have an update on where we stand with the financials from the orders for the? Tax year twenty twenty one and when, and if they have all the information for tax year twenty twenty two?
They have all the information for uh the year before, that, that we've been waiting on. He expects to have it within next week, ten days.
Okay, and twenty twenty two, what's the holdup with that?
He doesn't have any information. We still have it down office.
Is there any reason why we haven't been feeding them town information? Is it because they don't have time to work on our, our account?
They can't, they can't do the next one until they complete the previous.
Okay, so is there a timeframe for when that will happen and when we can anticipate getting that information?
But we just said the week.
The one that, the one that we waited on.
Yeah.
A week, ten days.
As soon as they're ready for, as soon as they're ready for the next year, I'm ready.
You're ready to give it to them, okay. Uh, did we get the trio uh conversation resolved? I know you've been trying to get a hold of trio, it seems like a month now. Have they communicated with you?
About the, about the assessing there?
About a whole series, I, you, you, you have spoken at a number of meetings telling us that there have been lots of glitches with trio and problems. And no one has responded to you from trio after numerous phone calls. Did we get a response?
I think it's only one glitch, and it was with media assessing, and no, they haven't done that.
And why is that?
That's how they operate.
Well, that's not, I, I, this to me is a complete uh. Breakdown. I, I can't understand how we can all sit here, having spent a lot of money for licensing this software. We can't get a response from our vendor. I mean, they're dealing with communities all over Maine.
Right.
Right? Have we reached out to other communities, line up, they have complaints or to the uh, to any governing agency? I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just as a businessman. I would never tolerate that.
And frankly, every town has something to say about trio. But they have created themselves to be not a monopoly, but as close to that as you can be.
So, I, I don't want to be the dead horse today, but you call a customer service. Representative or our, our uh service agent, whoever we have that we do business with. And that person now, over the past couple of months, has never returned our phone call?
They either don't return or they tell us that they are still working on them.
Uh, well, that's a different situation. So they have a major software, have they admitted they have a major software problem?
They have admitted that it was a glitch to happen.
And have they offered us any compensation for all the pain and agony it was due to everyone else in this staff?
No.
Have we written them, have we gone to them in writing with anything or any demands for, you know, performance?
Emails have been gone, have, have been.
Uh, okay, my next question is, you mentioned earlier today that expenses are down by sixty thousand dollars. I think that's great. What's been the uh driver behind that?
Not buying eating fuel as much as we thought that we were going to. Um, electricity being, I maybe, we, maybe we budgeted higher than we needed to for electricity. Um, so I'm trying to remember the budget off my, off my head. Um, so it's a cornucopia of savings. It's a lot of different things, yeah.
Well, that's fair.
Oh, in black, sorry, and just to like clarify, by sixty thousand dollars under budget, well, by that, what I mean is. I tried to forecast the budget over, you know, if it's this month of, of the budget year.
It's just year today.
Right, yeah, or fiscal year.
Right, okay, I understand. Um, got another one. Um. I think these guidelines for all committees in, in the town that have to meet quarterly. Uh, there are other committees that I serve on, and one committee has not met quarterly. Uh, they need to be made or determined, be aware of this change in the policy and posted so that everyone can be. Uh, in compliance, and that would be great. Oh, yeah, this is another one. Sorry, I, I don't need to be. The uh education committee that uh we're in the process of, now that Don has uh volunteered to be on the committee and he's been approved. Can't we get the other appointees approved tonight? I, I don't understand why we can't do that, so we can.
What's the difference between tonight and two weeks?
Because we'd rather move forward in, in the.
Immediat, be.
Yeah. I, I, I don't understand, but okay. Uh, I know you're meeting to talk about uh, uh personnel matters and turnover that we've had in the town office, which is rather egregious. In my opinion, uh, do we, uh, as our personal policy, conduct exit interviews with our employees?
The new, the new process, the new personal policy.
So to date, we have not had an exit interview with any employee that's worked for this town?
Not that I.
I just have a couple more. Uh, general assistance, uh, this is a very difficult time. Where are we in terms of budget and what we forecasted for that?
Um, the good thing for Dresden is that we, we didn't budget. In, anyone for Dresden, um, what has been done in the past, if any money that was sent to the town. From the state as a reimbursement was put aside, so the town actually has twelve thousand dollars aside for that. Um, and so far this year. I don't know, we've had a few, um. We've probably spent four thousand dollars. So. Um, the governor's office, I hear, is working on something.
Uh, okay, I, I only have one, so I'll just end on this one. Are we going to put out an R and P? Did we put out an R and P for this camera system, then have we looked into other less expensive solutions? Uh, for this, because I know at the Bridge Academy Library, we had like eight or ten cameras there, and it costs us less than a thousand dollars to put them in. So I would, I would respectfully ask you to try and formalize these processes a little more. And get more people out in the marketplace coming back to us with answers, and I applaud the fact that you're not going to do business with Virgus. You are very positive note. Thank you.
Back to the audit. Uh, you said, John, that this wouldn't be great and we can't raise or something. Can we know, what I'm hearing is he's been doing this week. You have to kind of pushing these late, slow and turn around. Is there an issue with that? Is it, does it have to do with providing timely information to him, or is it is turn around? And one more question, you said you're talking about twenty twenty two. Have we agreed to go back to rural, or is that process going to work for? Have we agreed to go back to rural or is that process going to go for a bit?
Well, I'm not too sure. I mean, that we've, we've had rural for many years.
That's good and bad.
Well, I understand that. Uh, you know, and it seems like we have. A little group that that wants to push us, uh, you know, something different. Uh.
Well, maybe there's some issues there, that's why they're being pushed.
Well, I, in 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 talking with the with the owner. I think they were in the same position as a lot of other businesses. They didn't have the help. They've got, they've got people, I mean, they don't have. Uh. I don't think they have as much help as they want. Uh, which it 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 should take a little bit longer than. I mean, I I I don't have a a reason that. Uh, you know, and I haven't asked them to to give me a specific reason as to why he hasn't been done yet.
He does twenty other, twenty seven of the initial. And there's six that don't have twenty one done, Dresden is one, but. I don't know that.
Why?
Well, I guess. We've been asking, I guess. Well, we already knew it. Asking why, why have we have not handled the issues?
Is it, is it us? Do we need to provide something?
He's got everything we need, but I understand he has got everything he needs in town, right? For for twenty twenty one, and that's why Daniel did not like twenty two, so. Cause we have got twenty twenty ones back yet, so why give him something?
Right, but in all fairness. As stated last time, he didn't receive everything from us, which is why it was. But. So we put down, well, that's, that's, I'm using, right? Right, it's a potential contributing factor. Right, but not talking. I personally have not talked to. Um. Them, so I don't. Know what's the situation.
But even before that. We, the year before that, when they, when the pandemic and all, we was behind before that. We didn't, we didn't get twenty twenties back. But, I mean, so quite a bit of time after, so we couldn't do our bike thing, so it's been. It's been tense and pandemic and all that happened.
So that way, so that way, so that, do I have?
But it's, it's, you know, it. There's nothing saying, there's nothing saying we can't, you don't have to go out with that, you know, look at that twenty twos. You know, you see, maybe we need to. Well, we're waiting, I, you know, I, I know nothing about it, so.
Well, at least sit down and say. You seem to have a timing issue in this back. What do we need to do? When do we need to get information to you? What can we do to make sure that we get it back and done? And what can you promise us before the general? Is anyone done that?
We may next, let's make a phone call and find out.
No, he's done, let's do it, right?
I mean, John called him, oh, John has been calling and asking, you know, we want to, just.
React, let's be.
Oh, well. Right. Well, since his last meeting, John has called him and given, this has been since our last meeting. That's where you got, uh, ten days, week to ten days. And this has been since last week.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, okay. I I've been on the Georgia review committee going into my fourth year. We have unanimous complaint about this order from the first day I was on that committee. So this is nothing to do, he didn't have labor problems back then because of COVID, there wasn't COVID back then. So we need to ask him the hard questions, not, you know, hey, having a nice day, how are you, you know, but. What, why, why are we in this situation? Maybe we're at fault, I don't know, but we need to fix it.
And and I do think we want, I.
But we need to deal, we need to deal, we need to deal in facts, okay, not beliefs, okay? And I'm telling you, we have documentation that. Going back from the beginning, minutes of our meetings, we've talked about the condition of the order, the lack of the depth of information. So it's been a frustration. That's all.
Please, sir. I was just gonna ask, so we've been sitting on twenty twenty two, well, I guess it's more of a statement. Waiting for twenty twenty one to be done, when we could have been proactive and gone out and had somebody else are doing an RFP for twenty twenty two. We would have perhaps been in this process. I don't know, but I know NMA does audits and they haven't had any problems, so why are we not even exploring them? I mean, there's many other audits that you can find from the auditors from the state. That they're timing. And that seems to be, I think everyone's. Concern is the timeliness of our town, uh, our auditor. So. Stay.
Looking to that?
We can't start on the next audit until, until the other one's done, like.
Understood.
Yeah, no.
You've got a timeframe of how many months, Daniel? That they've been not doing twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two is sitting there and you have a town meeting coming up. In six months.
Right.
And we'd like to see it all done.
Right. Hold on.
So.
Find my words for a second. Uh, sorry.
So. So what? So what do we do?
Yep.
What do we do?
We will talk about it. We'll see if we can come up with something. We'll, we'll see if we can come up with something within the next couple of weeks and and try to come up with a plan on. What what we're gonna do by now.
For next meeting.
For the next meeting, we'll see what we can do.
Be nice to have an RFP.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work on it, we will work on it.
It just wants to address a couple of comments, I believe, but because it feels like it came to me. Um. They did not receive everything official, I mean, they. They received everything in March, maybe late March, early April, but then I took everything back because I didn't want them to see our looks. A- a- as it were. So just for the record, that's, that's why they weren't received until June.
What is the issue? And I just did, I'm sorry, turn into chat.
Yep.
What was the issue?
I I I took them back because I was looking through stuff and I was blown away by. The fact, like the water department was nowhere, was nowhere in our uh, uh, accounting system. At at all. So I was like, whoa. So I took everything back, worked with, working with another trade hub friend. And we got everything from the water department, everything else. And we, 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 we went through each account, you know, line by line and and we compared it to what, you know. To what it, to what it should have been versus what we thought it should have been, what the auditors thought it should have been. Essentially, sorry to interrupt your conversation here. Um. Yeah, that's why it was late and, and I will say. I think that there are. I don't necessarily know that we could run any, any, any bit quicker from from Brewer's office. I definitely think we could have gotten more communication from them. Um, because I have to now have John do it because they actually don't care about what's, they don't care about answering me for anything. Whether it's an email or a phone call.
That's, I don't wish.
And that's, 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 that's horrible. And as far as other stuff goes. I don't, I don't want to throw, I don't think throwing anybody under the bus is the right word, but. From my understanding of looking back at the records, looking back at other stuff. Talking to other people, the town's been behind since Trudy left. When Trudy was doing everything. The, 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 the like fiscal year would end. The following months, she, 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 she would give everything to. Yeah. To Brewer's office. That, that, that hasn't happened since she left. I don't know when, when she left, four or five years ago?
No, a year and a half ago, right?
Yeah, 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 back in, uh, when, eighteen. Near eighteen. Yeah, December or eighteen.
Okay, three years.
Yeah.
I mean, I came in December of last year, halfway through the twenty two year and the twenty one year hadn't even been closed out. And we let, we let alone sent to them. And then on top of it, you add all the like. I don't wanna call it dumb mistakes, I guess.
Right.
That were made, not, not, not from Annaly, so they are one of the people who did an amazing job. Um. For other people, so anyway. I just needed to. To address why, you know, when, 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 when people say that, that they, that they didn't receive it until, until that day. There's reason why they didn't do it, not because. I didn't want to drive down the road till I give it to them.
Well, I need to bench Daniel, I don't, you don't mind. You came into a mess.
It was.
And I think you did a remarkable job doing what you did.
Thank you.
So, I mean, not timely on us, you know, shame on us, but you cleaned it up, but still, it's the twenty twos. It's hanging.
Yes.
It's the hanging fruit and it should have been addressed a while back, when we knew the twenty one was kind of good. We returned timely now.
I I I think, Daniel, I I agree with Lisa, I think you've done a remarkable job of putting stuff together. Being proactive and attending the budget review meetings we had when, when we were active, we were in it the previous year. And putting everything in the proper gap criteria, I think, is a major, giant.
Yes.
I said, but the frustration that I had sitting here as a taxpayer is we don't seem to identify the fact we got a problem here. And we just let it go on and on and on and we don't go out and look for a solution. Right? And I, and we need to be timely and proactive, and I think that's where all this frustration comes from. On behalf of the town residents, we, 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 everything is delayed or pushed down the road. We need to, we're, we're facing, we're, we're, we've got a perfect storm heading our way. And it's really serious. And so we need to be really proactive and start to think in positive ways and down the road, what's? What's gonna be our, our, what's our vision for the town in terms of a, a long-term plan? You know, what are we working on? What, what, what's the priorities? How are we gonna spend the money to that? Because we're, we're facing a lot of dynamics that are. They're gonna be hitting the screen pretty soon, a lot of them have already. So there are a lot of people here that are willing to pitch in and help. But we need to have your support. We need to know that, that if we come forward with, with ideas or opportunities. That y- y- you guys are gonna move it forward and it's not gonna take ten meetings to get it, to get it, to get it done. It's, um, that, that, I think that's the biggest frustration that, that I personally have. And I would love to see us be uh, change agents in that regard to try and, and, and get this town. Uh, moving forward, because there are a lot of, a lot of policies, but I, I had, I have no idea that, that we could. We had no protection against this solar incursion that's happened to other towns. So this is the first, the first I've heard about it. That should be an issue that's posted in the communicator, so people know about it or posted on the town website. I mean, th- these are the kind of messages that you guys need to be delivering to us.
No, I don't even think neither you guys, until I do it today, that's why I want it. Okay, that's why this is, that's why I asked for a moratorium, if we can do it. So they will look into it as quick as possible. If we can stop that, we may not be able to, but if we can put a foothold on it.
Well, you can stop it for a hundred and eighty days.
But it's a lot, you have to go through it. It may take thirty days, uh, forty days to go through it. If somebody comes up within that thirty or forty days. We can't do anything about it, so we, now.
Well, that, that, well, we have, we have, we have a ten-day window that we have to notify the town from any of us, right? To, to put it into any kind of, but in the short term of that, we can still put in place a moratorium.
We're in my understanding, it has to be from the. Public side.
The public side, so I need, so.
I believe you need to have a special town meeting.
Yeah.
With the intent of presenting to them. A moratorium on ordinance development for industrial commercialization that power problem. And if they say yay, then we've got a hundred and eighty days. Which can be extended under extending circumstances, maybe for a whole year.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think that's. And I think that's the most important thing we bring. If we do anything else.
Right, we need a little meeting, yeah.
I think you gotta kind of pull back the reins here because you don't wanna tangle with some town leader. We, we wanna have a public meeting first, so everybody has an understanding of what this is gonna be presented with a moratorium. Then you have your town.
Yeah, that's public meeting first, right?
Yes.
And then.
Thirty days before your town meeting. And then.
So if there's, if there's a. Yeah, if there is a vote you have to, if it's just an open time meeting, you don't have to. You should have a, a public hearing, which will happen.
Okay, so emergency town meeting isn't possible until after you have a public.
I'm having an emergency public meeting, have all the facts presented.
Yeah.
And then follow it through within ten days and have your town.
Right.
I mean, it can all be done.
Just turning plain by base.
Yeah.
I, you know, whatever, and I don't, and I don't mean. Sound like I'm running around screaming, this is gonna come at us. But my concern is, is I've already seen, like I said. Today I saw Davy's Tree come up over the hill. Davy's Tree was taking pictures of fields. Davy's Tree is big at power, at solar power in New Jersey. It's a nationwide. Uh, company that is a consultant firm for power generation people. So I mean, Dresden's got a lot of open land. And I didn't know, and that's why I came here tonight, and that's why I talked to Alan this morning. I didn't know what the process was to get a moratorium in place, but I've got. Can't remember, so this field, I think it is. Uh, they, they had done the same thing. They got caught. But they got the commercialized side in there, they got a moratorium on commercial, they didn't get the industrial. So, and the industrials are the big guys. Now, just to, just to be clear on this, the state of Maine in June enacted a law that became effective October first. That requires one of the biggest things that they're having problems with is the decommissioning. Because right now, solar panels are considered generally waste, you know, all those except for the metal, it all goes into the landfill. And when you're talking about three hundred thousand panels. In a huge industrial type like what's up in, in uh, Farmington. Uh, you're talking about a wall of industrial waste, there's no recycling firms in North East State, there's time, all of it's out in the west. And they will recycle it, but you have to send the panels to them. So the concern is, is that. First off, they have the city environment. That's, I mean, I, I, I'm really concerned about that. Uh. And then after twenty five years. Who takes care of it? So this is where the state stepped in in June, effective October first, there, anything over three acres is required. Have the EPA certify that it is in fact in compliance with what they want. So there are some things out there that have been put in place at the state level. The local level is the problem. And that's where, that's where my concern is. And I'll give up my.
We'll see what we can do with that.
I would, that, that would be the only thing that I would ask, and if I may approach. Or, I would like to give you guys just a, just a real quick sheet of paper that outlines why it is concerned with this.
Yeah.
That one?
They're all the same.
All the same, they're talking of all of them.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Anything? Sorry, just continuing on this, so what is the plan of action? I'm hearing, you know, you're gonna make it a priority. But are we gonna see something by the end of the year? Are we looking at January? What, what is the plan?
Which is what you're talking about.
The solar, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm following up on the solar, thank you.
You already got one coming back on the audit.
Right.
That's for the next meeting, right?
I didn't know, but you were playing devil's say, I wanna make sure you knew what you told me.
No, for the solar, is, is there a plan that we're gonna see something in the next thirty days or to get a town?
I would hope that, I'm hoping that. We can talk and I'm hoping by next meeting. That we'll have something in place that we may be able to come up with, whether a public, whether it's a public hearing. You know, by the next meeting or every day for it, then right after that is, is something, so. You know, it, it would be nice to do it within the next thirty days, but I am so deep, but I don't believe we can get it done before January. Where it's a holiday and all.
You know.
Which isn't the plan, you know, is it the next sixty days, then I mean, that would be something that we all know that'll be in the next.
And then I go into, you know, him himself and Jeff or whatever would have to be, the planning board would come and speak. About it at that, at that meeting.
That's no problem, though.
You know, as far as that goes, so.
I think by the next meeting, we can have a timeline.
Awesome, good, awesome.
Hey, John.
John, I'm David.
John, um. Didn't Jeff tell us that he's working on a ordinance amendment for the, for the solar farms?
This is, this is, so because of that, that, if somebody were to a- apply for one, right, right, right now. They would be able to because we haven't passed anything. So what people are probably doing is doing an emergency. Uh, yeah, like ban on them now. Or that quickly, a- a- as we can.
Okay, so what's the status on the ordinance change?
Yeah, yeah, it's going to go after my, the town meeting and after, after the moratorium. An actual ordinance, I don't wanna develop an ordinance and I don't, I, I'm not gonna speak for the, the planning board. Myself as a planning board member. Until the town gives input on what the town wants. I think it would be us sitting there making decisions for the town and I don't support that. So we've got a question there, ready to go out. But in the meantime, if someone comes in. That wants to put in a huge industrial power. That wants to put in a huge industrial power system. There's nothing in our ordinances right now to stop that.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, but I was just wondering where we stood as far as, as getting. Um, you know, a public hearing on the ordinance change.
That's what we're working through tonight right now. That's what we're working through. What I'd like to see happen is I'd like to see a moratorium on any ordinance development. Give us a hundred and eighty days, but to do that, that's the public hearing that we're talking about right now.
Okay.
I have just one more question. No, the go up with the water department. I know that. The last like board meeting when we were gonna get done, I think it was you that said you were gonna get an update as to where we're at, we were discussing having the town take it over. Do we have any updates on where we're going with the water department?
I am trying, Daniels. I. Uh, no.
No, okay.
It's, it's on the list, but it's not high on the, first not at the top of the list right now.
Well, I, I, it was just, I, Don had said he was gonna have to provide an update, so I was just wondering if you had an update. No, okay.
There seems to be a lot of confusion. Uh, you said that the. Their audit. Was delayed because you had real concern. About the financial information, whatever you had or didn't have in the water district, like water department. Uh, I think it was suggested last meeting that maybe we could use an audit or review or something with the water department.
I think you, is you have an audit done of the water department in truly lack?
No, no, no. No.
Okay, so.
So this is confusion and I'm not sure of the right oversight, if everyone's confused. Or I have a concern.
So in terms of the water department have its relationship with the town, I think everybody is confused on it. So, but unfortunately, there's other pressing things that are taking. But in the meantime, what I've been able to do is. Um, the water department, their finances have, have always gone through the audit, so they've always been audited. When the, when the town is. Is audited, the issue that I had was that. There was no accounting system or the, or the water department. It was Trudy or. The administrator or, or the, the, or just kind of doing one bank rep at the end of the year for all the checks that were written. So now what we did would be brought it in the fold. So now. I can print reports of checks that were issued for the water department. I can print off a, a GL of, of, of the water department. We track the appreciation and the depreciation of the assets. Which was not done before. It was time just floating up in the air.
And there's a lot of. Investment. Capital there.
Yeah.
That needs proper oversight.
Is that correct?
Correct, because. I think on, on a monthly basis, expenses. outweigh these income.
By tenfold, yeah.
So. It doesn't. Sooner or later, you're gonna run out of money if you don't, if you don't manage your problem.
Yep, yep.
So I think we need to review.
Yep.
Well. And I, well, I will offer my services. Okay. Wanting to spend some time with you and get pretty. Good overview together with some. Perhaps some recommendations.
Before the head.
I think in terms of the finances. We're at a good point. We're at a point now where they're completely under the umbrella in the full of, of Lady Town. So I think what you and I, or you and Don could, could work on would be those recommendations of how to. Of how to keep it going, you know, how to use the, you know, use the X number of dollars that are in savings, because now. You know, for however long, the interest rates are going back up.
Right.
So we gotta start to earn money again.
Well, nothing more. At the end of this review, you can say, yes, we're kind of.
Exactly.
You can't say that, right?
No.
But that doesn't, that's the issue.
Yeah, and that doesn't even bring into the questions of like. How, you know, how the water district itself.
Right.
Right. You know, already.
Four, five years ago. We didn't need, we, we truly just didn't book, we didn't know who owned it. We didn't know that we, and since then, we've got a lot of answers. And I know it doesn't seem like much. But we've got a lot of answers through the state on who does own what and what's the boards are supposed to be and all that. We actually finally have paperwork. The Dresden Waterway and we never had water department and we never had that.
Step on the right edge.
So it's, yeah, it's. It's been something, been in the works, so it'd be nice, it'd be a pleasure to have you step on one more.
So what do you need to do? Let me, well, let's see the holidays. And then we'll, and then we'll dive into this. This is water.
Need an appointment?
No, I think you're, you, you are volunteering your time and, and I'm volunteering my time. No, I think that's all part of my, I mean, that's all part of the game.
All right.
Yes, I just have a question. Is the town's water system managed by an outside company?
We don't know.
So who responds to the alarm goes off?
Water department, Chuck Apple.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's an outside.
We just, we hired them last year, two years ago.
Yeah, we do have someone that's gonna respond to it. We, the people working in the states have been very nice, force national bank. But, uh.
And they write the CCR at the end of the year?
Yes.
They also, I mean, they, they handle the Richmond's water department. And that. They do quite a bit of it, uh. So, so I, I, I don't know that. Not that they're responsive, what we call.
Uh, well, you've got somebody there, I mean, and that, that's who I was asking, you've got somebody there. I know we have this, this infraction system, I know we have a pouring injection system.
They have all that.
They're the ones that have to maintain that.
It, it's open that we have, they do all the island, they, they have a lot of town.
I don't need a whole nother time. I just, I want to launch it properly.
Hey, you might call you.
I don't. I'm going along the lines.
But like Steve, you could be an advisor.
All right, well, thanks folks. Dave, gonna kick everyone out, gonna have the executive say.
All right.
Boards will, the board will go into executive session for so we can do, and I'm sorry, I'm verified part six. Paragraph A for personal.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good day.
Kevin, we won't be. Two on presence.
Make a motion we want to.
All right, favorite item.